Senate will please come to order. Please stand for the prayer by Senior Pastor Mike Maiden, Church of the Nations, and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flag which will be led by Senator Burgess, and then the singing of the National Anthem will be performed by Lisa Hightower.
Thank you, President Darbrough. Thank you, Nancy Bartel, our lifelong friend. I thank all of you for your service to our great state. Thank you for what you're doing. I know for many of you it's a great sacrifice. We appreciate it as Arizonans. Would you join me in prayer, please? Heavenly Father, we thank you this day for our beautiful state, for allowing us and our families the privilege of living here. Many of us raise our children here, our grandchildren, our businesses, our lives. We thank you. I thank you for these courageous men and women who have yielded to the calling to serve the state, sacrificing much from their family and their businesses, their life. And Lord, I pray today that they would feel the grace of heaven, the strength of your Spirit in their lives, encouraging them, lifting them, empowering them. Lord, we pray as a community of people, all seeking the best of Arizona, the great prayer of Micah, God, that you would help us to do justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly. We cannot do justly without your wisdom, so give us, God, your mind, your thoughts for Arizona. We cannot live and love mercy without feeling your compassion for the hurting and suffering. Help us to never forget the forgotten ones in Arizona. And Lord, help us to walk humbly, acknowledging you as our Creator, acknowledging you as our great Savior and our Helper. Bless this state, bless our country, bless the work of these amazing men and women. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
Members and guests in the gallery, won't you please join me in honoring the flag of the greatest nation in the world today? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, and one justice, and one truth.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed by the twilight less gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, doth that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Pastor Maiden, Senator Burgess, and Ms. Hightower. Attendance will now be recorded by electronic roll call. We have 29 members, present, zero absent, and one excused. Without objection, the reading of the Journal of Tuesday, April 17, 2018 is dispensed with and approved as recorded by the Secretary. Introduction of guests. Senator Farnsworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Point of personal privilege, introduction of guests in the gallery.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Mr. President, members, I want to introduce a constituent and good friend of mine. Her name is Karen Sunt, visiting today. You'll see her up in the booth behind the camera there. She is the co-founder of the Arizona Constitutionalists and the designer of the Arizona Constitutionalists logo. She's a very talented photographer, a loyal American, and a good friend of mine. If you'd help me, welcome Karen Sunt.
Welcome to the Senate. Senator Mesa.
Yes, Mr. President. Point of personal privilege, two guests in the gallery.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I have, if Addison and Elliott Wessel could please stand up. Are they here? They are with the Phoenix Country Day Jazz Band. Let me tell you a little about their parents. Their parents are phenomenal architects. In fact, their parents are probably the premier architects in the country, and I've known their parents for about 12 years. And I've known these two gentlemen when they were like kids, little kids. One is in eighth grade, the other one's a senior. The senior, Addison, got into Dartmouth and is waiting to hear from MIT. Both brilliant young men and the future of Arizona. Both of you, thank you for being here.
Welcome to the Senate. Senator Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to a point of personal privilege. Introduction of the Doctor of the Day.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a pleasure to have a Doctor of the Day from somewhere besides Kavanagh's district, Kate Brophy McGee's district. But anyway, I would like to welcome a constituent and a friend from Globe. Dr. Michael R. Durham is Doctor of the Day today from District 8. He has recently retired in the General Practice Specialist in Globe, Arizona. He graduated with honors in 1977 from the medical school in Wadlerhara. Having more than 40 years of diverse experience, especially in general practice, Dr. Michael R. Durham was affiliated with the Cobra Valley Regional Medical Center in Globe, where he served as Chief of Staff. And this is for Sonny. In addition, Dr. Durham served in the Marines. And for five years, and received the Purple Heart. Dr. Durham, thank you for being with us, and welcome to the Senate.
Welcome to the Senate. Senator Farley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to a point of personal privilege proclamation and guests in the gallery.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Members, this is International Jazz Day. As you'll discover, if you walk around the lawn, there's going to be lunch out there. There's all sorts of bands playing from 11 till 3. It's going to be an amazing time, in the middle of all the stresses we're under lately, to go out and chill out. And I have a proclamation to read. This is honoring April as Jazz Appreciation Month and April 30 as International Jazz Day. Whereas the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization and Herbie Hancock created this day of celebrating jazz in 2011. And whereas William Doc Jones created International Jazz Day Festival in 2013 and incorporated International Jazz Day Arizona Foundation, a nonprofit organization, in 2015. And whereas jazz is recognized all over the world as an art form born in America. And whereas jazz is an international art form recognized for promoting peace and dialogue among cultures. And whereas jazz is known for its diversity and its respect for native culture and the eradication of divisive ideology. And whereas jazz is promoting freedom of expression, fostering positive interaction between generations, and enriching the lives of the youth. And whereas International Jazz Day brings together communities, schools, artists, historians, academics, and jazz enthusiasts all over the world to celebrate and learn about jazz and its roots, future, and impact, raise awareness for the need of intercultural dialogue and mutual understanding, and reinforces international cooperation and communication. And whereas on April 30, Arizona International Jazz Day Festival will continue to bring together ethnic groups, communities, artists, historians, academia, and real jazz enthusiasts throughout our communities and around the state of Arizona to celebrate and learn about jazz and its roots. And whereas William Doc Jones will be recognized for his role within the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization promoting goodwill and jazz with the mission to use International Jazz Day to connect cultures using jazz and blues and promote the great state of Arizona around the world. Therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Senate support and recognize April as Jazz Appreciation Month and April 30 as International Jazz Day. Dated this 18th day of April 2018, Stephen B. Yarborough, President of the Senate, and Steve Farley, Assistant Democratic Leader. So thank you for listening to Jazz Day proclamation. And now I want to introduce a couple people in the gallery. First off, Lisa Hightower. If you could stand up. I don't know about you, but I was getting chills throughout that entire rendition of the National Anthem. I am so grateful for your coming and performing with us. That was amazing. Thank you so much. And of course, Doc Jones is with us as well. Doc, could you stand up? Thank you so much for starting this entire thing and having that great festival out there on the lawn today and the one on April 30. Thanks for what you're doing to promote this understanding and connection through jazz, and we definitely need chill out time right now. So welcome to the Senate.
Welcome to the Senate. Senator Brophy McGee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for a point of personal privilege introduction of guests in the gallery.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. And members, I'm so pleased to recognize some guests in the gallery today who are employees of a small business enterprise from my district. Along with many Doctors of the Day, we have some great businesses in District 28. The business is Bula Intelligence. Bula is the national leader in pharmacy compliance and regulatory tracking, and two of their employees are distinguished former employees of the House and Senate, Sarah Wharton and Beth Solieri. And if I could ask all the employees of Bula to please stand and be recognized, welcomed.
Welcome to the Senate. Senator Yi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to a point of personal privilege introduction of guests in the gallery.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, please join me in welcoming students who are here from Arizona State University. They are representing the Young Southeast Asian Leaders Institute. ASU's institute here was launched in 2013 as a U.S. signature program to strengthen leadership development and networking in Southeast Asia through a variety of programs, including educational and cultural exchanges, regional exchanges, and strengthen ties between the United States and Southeast Asia. The program includes civic engagement, environment, natural resource management, and entrepreneurship, as well as economic development. Each fellow applicant goes through a very rigorous competitive process to be chosen to represent his or her country. After initial selection, the fellow is required to have approval by his country's ambassador and the U.S. Embassy before receiving final approval to participate in this institute. These fellows are the top and best students from their country. This year, Arizona State University is excited to welcome these fellows traveling from Vietnam, Thailand, Malaysia, the Philippines, Cambodia, Indonesia, Burma, Myanmar, and Laos to join our Phoenix delegation for the 2018 institute. Please rise and be recognized as we welcome all of these fellows to the Arizona Senate today. Thank you.
Welcome to the Senate. Senator Bartow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for a point of personal privilege introduction of guests.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. And members, I'm not sure if Mike is still here. Mike, Pastor Mike, are you still here? Well, I'm going to tell you about him anyway. Thank you, with your permission, members. We were blessed to have Pastor Mike here to pray over us today from Church for the Nations. His ministry over the years has blessed so many in our valley with all the satellite campuses throughout the state. But on a personal level, I just wanted to share how much I appreciate Pastor Mike and his family. Our kids went to school together. And even before that, 40 years this September, his dad, Dr. Richard Maiden, our pastor, when Joe and I were dating, actually married us. And so we go back a long time and so appreciate what the influence and the friendship of the Maiden family in our own personal lives. And thank him for coming down to pray today and always keeping the Arizona Legislature and our government in their prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. I'm going to go to Senator Alessandro.
I have some comments about Jazz Day.
Please proceed.
In conjunction with Jazz Day and April being Jazz Month, I'd like to invite everyone this Saturday down to Nogales, which is historically significant, culturally diverse, and very safe. It is the birthplace of Charlie Mingus, who was born there when there was an Army installation there. And he is a famous jazz person, and now deceased, but very, very extremely talented in the jazz world. And we have a wonderful free event in Nogales as part of the Mingus Festival. So I invite you all to come. I know some of you have come down to Nogales in connection with the Fresh Produce Association, but this is a very special cultural event. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Senator Otondo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for a point of personal privilege introduction of guests in the gallery.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I am sure that a few of you, I hope all of you, remember the prayer that was done by a Holocaust survivor that happened here on the Senate floor a few weeks ago. Well, today, I'm going to have the honor of doing a proclamation for Mr. Robert Suts, who did the art at the Jewish Heritage Museum in honor of Holocaust members. But today in the gallery, we have three guests who have also come to witness the proclamation, and I'd like to introduce them. So everybody, please give a warm welcome to the author, Oscar Noblock. He was the gentleman that did the prayer. Oscar, welcome back. So nice to see you. And also Jeffrey Shoschnell. He is the Associate Director and the Curator of the Jewish Heritage Center. Please stand. Thank you. And also Gary Thomas is Oscar's son-in-law. So welcome, Gary. Please, members and guests, give them a warm welcome to the Senate.
Welcome to the Senate. Members, we're going to stand at recess to the sound of the gavel so that Senator Otondo can read her proclamation and have her guests come to the floor. So please, everyone, just stay put, and we are at recess to the sound of the gavel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm so happy that this can happen today on the floor. Members and guests in the gallery, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Robert Suts. Whereas Robert Suts was born in 1929 in Chicago, Illinois, and has dedicated his life and career to becoming both a successful commercial and fine artist. And whereas his mastery of the use of different media, such as oil, pen, ink, pastel, and watercolors, has earned him national and international recognition. And whereas Robert, whose father's Polish family perished in Nazi concentration camps, first began producing Holocaust-related art during the 1990s after he served as an interviewer for the Steven Spielberg's Survivors of the Shoah Project. And whereas the project we remember, the Holocaust art of Robert Suts, is a collaboration among the artist, the Arizona Jewish Historical Society, and the Phoenix Holocaust Survivors Association and its descendant group, Generation After. And whereas the project exhibits powerful art depicting Holocaust survivors in life masks, paintings, and stories, and has been shown around the country, including here in Arizona at the Scottsdale Community College during the school's Genocide Awareness Week, and is currently exhibited at the Cutler Plotkin Jewish Heritage Center, right here in Phoenix. And whereas Robert has received numerous honors and awards, including the Shofar Zakhar Award presented by the Phoenix Holocaust Survivors Association, and the Beryl Morton Award presented by the Arizona Jewish Historical Society. And whereas Robert moved to Arizona in 1997 and opened his own studio in Scottsdale to pursue his Holocaust Remembrance Project. And whereas his artwork now includes over 140 life masks and portraits of Holocaust survivors, liberators, and righteous Gentiles. And now, therefore, in recognition of Robert Suts's lifelong dedication and passion to the arts, be it proclaimed by the Senate of the State of Arizona, the House of Representatives concurring, that Robert Suts's Holocaust Remembrance artwork is unique in the world in its artistic and educational approach, and is an important voice to ensure that we, as a people, may proclaim never again. Mr. Suts, it is such an honor to give you this proclamation. Members, Mr. President, and guests in the gallery, please, let's give Mr. Suts a warm, warm round of applause. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Would you like, can I, Mr. Suts, can I ask him if he'd like to say a couple words, Mr. President?
While we're in recess, he could. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I've been very happy to work on this project for almost 30 years, and I feel that it is very important for young generations to realize that this horrible event did happen. And by producing life masks made from life of some of the survivors, it is quite clear that some of the survivors certainly look like us. They did not look like what the German people talked about, that they looked subhuman and not human. So I just wanted to preserve their likeness, their beautiful likeness, and I am continuing to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Suts.
Thank you very much. The Senate will please come to order. Business on the President's desk, communications from the Governor, without objection, communications from the Governor listed on the calendar will not be read and will be entered in the Journal. The Secretary will record the action. Messages from the House, without objection, messages from the House as listed on the calendar will not be read. The messages will be entered in the Journal. Conference Committee Appointments. Senator Yi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Senate a seat to the request of the House and appoint a free conference committee to House Bill 2159, Traffic Violations Traffic Survival School, to consider the matter of disagreement.
You've heard that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Eyes appear to have it, do have it. So ordered, the Secretary will record the action and notify the House. I will appoint Senators Worsley, Fan, and Otondo as members of this committee. Conference Committee Appointments. Senator Yi.
President, I move that the Senate a seat to the request of the House and appoint a free conference committee to House Bill 2383, now HOV Lane's Emergency Vehicles, to consider the matter of disagreement.
You've heard that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Eyes appear to have it, do have it. So ordered. I will appoint Senators Worsley, Smith, and Contreras as members of this committee. Secretary will record the action and notify the House. Conference Committee Appointments.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Senate a seat to the request of the House and appoint a free conference committee to House Bill 2532, now Occupational Regulation Municipalities, Counties Hearings, to consider the matter of disagreement.
You've heard that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Eyes appear to have it, do have it. So ordered. I will appoint Senators Smith, Peterson, and Bowie as members of this committee. Secretary will record the action and notify the House. Committee of the Whole, Senator Yi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Senate resolve itself into the Committee of the Whole for the consideration of bills on the calendar.
You've heard that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Eyes appear to have it, do have it. So ordered. I will ask Senator Gray to take the chair.
Committee of the Whole is called to order. Chair recognizes Majority Leader.
Chairman, I move that without objection, the bills on the calendar be read by number and title only.
Without objection, so ordered. Please read the first bill on the calendar.
House Bill 2003, an Act amending sections 425061, 425072, and 42604, Arizona Vice Statutes, amending Title 42, Chapter 6, Article 3, Arizona Vice Statutes, by adding section 426113 relating to transaction privilege, use, and other excise taxes. The Committee on Rules recommends that the following bills are properly consideration with the recommendation for a floor amendment. HB 2003, signed Steve Yarborough, Chairman. Mr. President, your Committee on Finance, having had an explanation, HB 2003 relating to coal mining, TPT repeal, submits the following report. Your Committee recommends that the bill do pass. Signed, David C. Farnsworth, Chairman.
Chair recognizes Senator Farnsworth.
Mr. Chairman, I move that when the Committee of the Whole rises to report, it recommends that House Bill 2003 do pass.
Please read Peshchakai, floor amendment.
Peshchakai, floor amendment, House Bill 2003, reference to House and Gross Bills, signed Jamie Seeta Peshchakai.
Senator Peshchakai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the Peshchakai floor amendment, reference to House Bill 2003, be adopted.
Explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My amendment requires the Department of Revenue to separately account for transaction privilege tax revenues collected from the business of coal mining privileged tax revenues collected from the business of coal mining, mining coal and selling coal at retail until the ownership transfer of the Navajo Generating Station has been approved by the Navajo Nation or by December 31st, 2022, whichever is earlier. It would require the Department of Revenue to transmit, one, one-third of the net revenues of the Arizona Commerce Authority to provide job training for residents of this state who are currently employed at the Navajo Generating Station and Peabody Energy's Cayenta Coal Mine. Number two, one-third of the net revenues to the Arizona Commerce Authority to provide grant monies for renewable energy projects located on the Navajo, on the Arizona portion of the Navajo Indian Reservation. Number three, one-third of the net revenues to the Arizona Board of Regents to provide in-state tuition scholarships to attend state universities for dependents of the employees at the Navajo Generating Station and Peabody Energy's Cayenta Coal Mine. Continuously appropriates the revenues to their respective agencies and exempts the appropriations from lapsing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will Senator Peshchakai yield to a question?
Do you?
Yes, sir.
He yields.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator Peshchakai, have you spoken with the bill sponsors?
No, I have not.
So he does not support this amendment?
I would not, no. He never consulted me on the running of this bill, and he has never reached out to me, and therefore, I'm running this bill without reaching out to him. Thank you.
Senator Smith.
So, Mr. Chairman, members, out of respectful opposition, I would oppose the Peshchakai floor amendment as it is not approved by the sponsor.
Senator Farnsworth.
Mr. Chairman, I also respectfully oppose the Peshchakai amendment.
Seeing no further discussion, members, the motion before you is the adoption of the Peshchakai floor amendment to House Bill 2003. All those in favor will vote aye. All those opposed, vote nay. Appears the noes have it, do have it, so ordered. Members, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion before you is that when the Committee of the Whole rises, report it recommends that House Bill 2003 be returned with a do pass. All those in favor will vote aye. All those opposed, vote nay. Appears the ayes have it, do have it, so ordered. Please read the last bill on the calendar.
House Bill 2235, An Act Amending Section 48529, Arizona Vice Statutes Relating to Municipal Improvement Districts. The Committee on Rules recommends that the following bills are properly consideration, HB 2235, signed Steve Yarborough, Chairman. Mr. President, your Committee on Government, having had an declaration, HB 2235 relating to municipal improvement districts, sales certificates, recommends that the bill be amended as follows, reference to House and Gross Bill. And as so, Metro Committee recommends that the bill do pass. Signed, Nancy Burley, Chairman.
Senator Burley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that when the Committee rises, report it recommends that House Bill 2235 receive a do pass recommendation.
Please read the committee amendment.
Mr. President, your Committee on Government, having had an declaration, HB 2235 relating to municipal improvement districts, sales certificates, recommends that the bill be amended as follows, reference to House and Gross Bill. And as so, Metro Committee recommends that the bill do pass. Signed, Nancy Burley, Chairman.
Senator Burley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Government Committee Amendment to House Bill 2235 be adopted.
Please read the Bartow floor amendment to the committee amendment.
Bartow floor amendment, House Bill 2235, reference to the Government Committee Amendment, signed Nancy Bartow.
Senator Bartow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the Bartow floor amendment, do the Government Committee Amendment be adopted?
Explanation.
Yes, thank you. The floor amendment limits dental therapists to only practicing at federally qualified community health centers or federal look-alikes, community health center, a nonprofit dental practice organization that provides dental care to low-income and underserved individuals, or a private dental practice that provides dental care for community health center patients of record. It prohibits a dental therapist from performing non-surgical extractions of permanent teeth unless under the direct supervision of a dentist. It prohibits dental therapists from independently billing for services, reduces from five to four the maximum number of dental therapists per supervising dentist. It allows a dental therapist to work under either general supervision pursuant to a written collaborative practice agreement or direct supervision. And it stipulates that a licensee is not required to maintain a dental hygienist license or obtain a dental hygienist license if the Board of Dental Examiners determines that the applicant otherwise meets the licensure requirements. It also defines terms and makes some technical and conforming changes.
Members, seeing no discussion, you've heard the motion and the explanation. All those in favor will vote aye. All those opposed, vote nay. Appears the ayes have it, do have it, so ordered. Senator Burley, to move your committee amendment as amended.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that the Committee rises, reports, it recommends that...
No, just move your committee amendment as amended.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that the committee amendment, floor, as amended, be adopted.
Members, you've heard that motion. All those in favor will vote aye. All those opposed, vote nay. Appears the ayes have it, do have it, so ordered. Senator Burley, to move your bill as amended.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the Committee rises, report, it recommends that House Bill 2235 as amended, do pass.
Members, you've heard that motion. All those in favor will vote aye. All those opposed, vote nay. Appears the ayes have it, do have it, so ordered. Senator Yi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the Committee of the Whole rise and report.
Members, you've heard that motion. All those in favor will vote aye. All those opposed, vote nay.
Senate will please come to order. The reader will read the report.
Mr. President, your Committee of the Whole, having had an association with legislation listed below, made the following recommendations. HB 2003 do pass, HB 2235 do pass as amended. Respectfully, Rick Gray, Chairman, Committee of the Whole.
Senator Gray.
Mr. President, I move that the report of the Committee of the Whole be adopted and the bills be properly assigned.
You've heard that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Committee announcements. Senator Griffin is not here. Senator Yi.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Republican Caucus will meet ten minutes after the start of the Democrat Caucus in Caucus Room Number One.
Well, no Senator Farley, no Senator Contreras, no Senator Hobbs, no Senator Casada. Who's next and seniority? Senator Bradley![1736.42][1736.42](laughter)[1737.42][1737.42](applause)
See if I can handle this. Okay. The Democratic Caucus, I believe, will, upon recess of the floor, we will gather in Room Two after we take over the Senate. No.[1756.53][1756.53](laughter) And then there's a...
An insurrection, I knew it.
Thank you.
Senator Burgess.
President, with your permission, the Judiciary Committee will meet at 2:00 PM this afternoon in Senate Hearing Room 109.
Thank you. Members, we are going to go to caucus. We're going to recess to the sound of the gavel. We're going to go to caucus, and then I would like you to return at 12:30. That should give you time. Caucus will be brief. That will give you time to grab lunch. We'll come back at 12:30. We will do some third reads at that point in time. So we are at recess to the sound of the gavel.